Okay, can I see where?
We're gonna read Tom's letter. Okay. All right, so opening the meeting for today's date, which is May 6th at 5:00 for Appointment Subcommittee. And, um, we're gonna do a short roll call. We have, um, myself and we have Counselors.
I'm the --
Do you wanna do it or do that? Sure, go right ahead.
You're gonna be writing the --
Roll call!
-- ticket notes. Okay.
That's okay. Well, so we have... Do you want to, um, get a piece of paper maybe and put it out for in case on the desk?
I should, I think, well, if I don't really lost her name.
Okay, so moving on, um, approval of the minutes from our last meeting.
I have to batch them, so I'll just get that.
Okay. And there's no one here for public time. And let's see, so we do, um, have a communication where we're gonna be reviewing four appointments tonight. One to the Board of Health and three to the Development and Industrial Committee. Um, one of the appointees, I asked all of the appointees to come to the meeting tonight. I actually asked, um, the appointments for the Development Industrial Committee to come around 5:30 'cause I didn't know how much time we were going to need for, um, the Health and the Board of Health appointment. Uh, so, um, this, we may end up having to take a break or recess.
Until 5:15.
Until 5:15 until whoever, you know, gets here, gets here. Uh, so, um, with that being said, uh, the only one that told me that he would not be able to make it here tonight is Tom Brown. And he, uh, is up for the appointment to Development and Industrial Committee and he did send me a letter. So I'm gonna have the letter, um, put into the record from Tom for the meeting tonight. And I'll read it out loud. So he basically said, "Joy unfortunately will not be able to attend the meeting on the 6th. Just by way of background, my appointment is a little unique. I've served on the EDIC since its inception in the early 90s and at that time there were two groups formed within the EDIC. Five members were appointed to the Finance Authority arm of the group and 10 members were appointed to the Economic Development arm of the group. The EDIC always acted as one cohesive group. The Finance Authority stayed intact in the event that financing would be needed for some economic development project. This never materialized and when we became a city with other options for financing, the need for this arm of the group went away. So this is, action is a sort of cleanup of the legacy. I'm the only remaining member of the original Finance Authority, so the suggestion was made that I resign from the Finance Authority and seek appointment to the Economic Development arm of the EDIC, which in effect is now the one EDIC. Hope that all makes sense and if you or any of the counselors have any questions with me prior to the meeting, please feel free to contact me. Thanks, Tom." So with Tom's background, I, um, I absolutely, um, wanna go forward and make the recommendation that, um, we appoint him to the EDIC. I think he's, uh, he's always been so active in the city and in the town, obviously. Um, and the background, I think, would be very helpful for the committee moving forward because he does have that financial piece intimately as being, you know, retired president of the bank and so forth, so I will entertain a motion.
Uh, move, we appoint Tom Brown to the Development Industrial Commission Committee. Term expiring, 12/31/17.
I'll second that motion. Any discussion on the motion?
I, I would just say that I agree with you and it works with the mayor's plan to make the EDIC a little bit easier to deal with because it was a very large committee before with the Finance arm and the committee, it was 15 people. So it's good to bring it all together and it's become a very, you know, cohesive, moving forward committee. So I think it's a great idea to move him onto it.
Okay. Anything else? All right, well, all in favor? Aye. Against? Well, isn't anybody against, because they're, um, 2-0. It should be noted in our, in our minutes that Counselor Smith couldn't make our meeting tonight, that she's out of town.
Was she gonna send an, did she got --
On something professional, so...
Was she gonna send an email? Yeah, you got it, yes.
No, I didn't, so, okay. Um, it's, uh, it's 5:06 and I don't, I don't see any reason to keep the tape running. Um, so we're gonna ask for adjournment or recess right now until our appointees come in.
Did you get a response from Carol Smith?
I did.
Oh, is she gonna attend?
She's going to attend, yes, yeah. She said that she would be here. But again, um, she probably not gonna get here till like 5:30-ish, so, all right? So I'll make a motion that we go for recess for temporarily and then we'll bring back, when we come back, when it, if we can get here, then we'll bring the camera back up. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you.
Do we have to open it, or are we just --
Yeah, now I'm gonna reopen the meeting. It is now, um, 5:17, we're back in session. Um, we're going to be reviewing the first, um, appointment on our list, which is Dennis L. Lacourse for the Board of Health. Uh, Dennis did give in the application to serve on the body. Um, he, Dennis was, um, hi, come on in.
Hi, no, I'm, I'm here for, um, I'm gonna be doing a group.
Oh, okay.
Not until 7:00.
Okay, okay.
How long will you be?
Uh, we gotta be up in City Council for 6, so, okay?
Okay, great, I'll just put my stuff over here.
So, um, Dennis has applied to be on the, um, Board of Health. He, um, just for those that don't know, served as our Health Inspector before this and he retired from that, um, position and has been obviously replaced. Um, did you get a letter from Dennis?
No.
No.
Nothing, just the application. So, um, at this point, right now, I'm gonna open it up to, uh, our counselors that are here. We have Counselor Hayes, Counselor Rist and of course Counselor McCoy and myself. So, um, do you wanna raise your hand and start the discussion, Counselor Rist?
I can't support his nomination. I hope the committee will, will reject it for two major reasons. One, I believe it will open old wounds that we have begun to heal with the business community since he was the Health Inspector. His enforcement of health regulations, although I wouldn't challenge the legality of it, I would challenge methodology as being unnecessary. Secondly, I believe strongly that having someone of his character as well as his ability overseeing our current Health Inspector puts a great deal of pressure on her and I think it makes micromanagement a huge issue. And I, I, I wouldn't appoint a former Health Inspector, no matter who it was, to the Board of Health overseeing the current Health Inspector. I have a problem with that very notion. Doesn't matter if it's Dennis, that's my biggest complaint, is I think that's a dangerous precedent. I'd like to see health professionals involved, um, people like nurses, doctors, things like that. I think that's a great way for them to make public commitment. And they, their interaction with the, with the Health Inspector, the current, is knowledge and law versus policy versus, well, the doctors or the, the health professionals might consider, you know, this doesn't seem right and they're, they're educated by the Health Inspector as to the law, et cetera, back and forth. I think it sets up conflict to have two Health Inspectors involved. I think it sets up a dangerous situation and I can't support this. Dennis served the city, um, he did his job, he doesn't have to do this. If we're desperate to get somebody on the Board, I'd like to know why, 'cause I know a couple of health professionals we could ask to consider. So I, I just can't, I can't support this story.
Okay.
Joe.
I would, um, Counselor Hayes? I would agree with everything Counselor Rist just said. I, I think that's pretty spot on to speak to your point about his relationship with the business community. I've never, there's never been an appointment where I've heard from people and there were two appointments that were, that were made at our last City Council meeting where I heard from a lot of people. Um, specifically, you know, restaurant owners and that he, you know, the, the job was to enforce code, but there were always extra things that were up to the discretion of the, that were extraneous, that, that are, you know, cost businesses money and it was the interpersonal relationship that a lot of people had problems with. The other thing I question is that the Board of Health is the overseer of that position. They are the body that, you know, hires and/or terminates or oversees that position. Dennis fills in for the Health Inspector if she's out.
Does she, does she, yeah?
Yeah. So it just seems like an innate conflict of interest that he would be overseeing his own position. It doesn't make any sense to me at all.
I don't think he could do that if he was Board.
Correct.
I don't think he could be the Health Inspector at all.
So it would, it would make a...
I'm surprised to hear that.
Yeah, so I, I just don't think it's, it's, it's feasible. That seems like a direct conflict of interest to have him oversee a position that he sometimes takes over. So, I, um, I don't endorse this proposal idea.
Yeah, boy, you guys, I think you made a standing job summarizing my thoughts too, you know. I would wish he was here 'cause there was a question, I know at one point he closed down a high school bake sale. I mean, again, I think that points to your thing that necessarily maybe it's within the realm of the law, but the methodology really. I mean, there's not like, okay, kids, this can't be done next time or you'll need to wrap up with it, not pure time. Um, I've heard from other, um, people too that it's just an ability and again, if it was, and I think that what becomes problematic is that his role as the overseeing policymaking member and then also just because that Boards of Health tend to be so untouchable by the rest of the city government, so to prevent public health decisions being made for political purposes. But that same autonomy, I think, prevents, gives us very limited recourse if it's not a good appointment. So I would also support this nomination, so.
Well, I, I agree with everything all of you have said, but my, my major concern with all of this is, is probably along the lines of what, what Dan has vocalized. I, I don't feel that it would be a very comfortable position to have the retired ex-Board Inspector, the, the Health Inspector, sitting on the Board of Health directing the new Health Inspector as to what her job is and her, and so forth. Yeah, and it's, I think it just would make the whole process very uncomfortable and like, and I agree with you, Dan. It could become very controversial. Um, it's, it's not an easy board to sit on. Um, they sometimes have to make decisions that really, you know, are not popular with people. Um, you know, the Health Inspectors get into some very touchy-touchy, uh, situations with, you know, having to move people out of their homes sometimes, condemning homes and, and making those kind of decisions that, that they really, you know, they end up no matter what being the bad guy, even though they're doing what they're supposed to be doing to protect the public health.
Yeah.
So, um, I, I think that this probably is not the right appointment for the Board and I think that, um, if, if tonight, um, at the meeting, if I just kind of implore the public for somebody to come forward to put their application in after the vote is done, if the vote goes that way, um, and that, that may be Joe, if the vote goes that way because he is the President, that we ask the President to implore.
Well, I would, I mean, I would just not say public, 'cause I believe actually there is another application, but has absolutely no public health. So I would say someone with public.
There is?
Yeah.
Someone applied?
We really, yeah, I, I think it's really important that somebody be in that position as either a nurse or a physician or somebody that has some kind of public health background.
Well, Dr. Vidka used to be on it and, and Chris had a great job.
Yeah, but he's, yeah, but he's, he's on the Air Force now, he's a major in the Air Force. He's an online surgeon for the, yeah, no, he, he really doesn't have to, no, I don't think so. But, and you should ask him, but I seriously doubt he has the time for it. Um, okay, so I will entertain a vote and a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept Dennis Lacourse as, uh, an appointment to Board of Health.
Okay, so you're making the motion in the positive.
You have to make it positive.
All right, motion has been made and I will second the motion to, uh, appoint Dennis Lacourse to the Board of Health. And, um, all in favor? All against? Aye. Okay, so the vote has gone to against the appointment and that's what we will report out to the school committee, I, yeah, to the City Council meeting. All right, moving on, um, again, I, I read Tom Brown's appointment and that's been made for the EDIC. Did we, did we make that motion?
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, okay, so Tom Brown, he's been appointed to the EDIC. And, um, so we're gonna move on to the, the next appointment, which is Carol Abby Smith. Um, and Carol sent us a letter. I did ask everybody to be here. Um, it is, it's 5:27, I asked them to be here around 5:30.
Her, her and Clay?
Yeah, I did, but, um, I got an email, um, I hate to do this, but we may end up having to take a -- I, I asked everyone to be here, um, and Clay Crowe wrote that he sh, he said sure he would be here. He has a summit to attend that day between 1:00 and 5:00 in Chickaby, but he should be able to get there in time. Oh, here he is.
Hi, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I meant it was 5:30 for someone, you were right, you were right.
Well, you're, you're right, it's 5:30.
Okay.
It's, yeah, we did, we did the health board, in fact. And then Carol said she would be here too around 5:30-ish, so, well, Clay's here, so this is good. All right, so we, we invited everybody to be here, Clay. Um, Tom Brown sent a letter, he couldn't make it, he's off doing something else. And so I read the, the letter that he sent us and we put it into the record and it's on here. Um, so, um, we have counselors here and I think, um, some, a couple of them, you sent a beautiful resume, thank you. Um, and you wanna be appointed to the EDIC. So, um, at this point, I will open it up to anybody that has any questions with Clay at this point and then, um, I, I'll start it off if you want. Why do you wanna be on the EDIC? What, what are you gonna bring to it that?
Uh, well, I've always been interested in the business development of East Hampton and, uh, since I was a business person myself and, uh, I've always, also wanted to do volunteer work for the city. And I, as you probably know, been involved for a few years, uh, being on various committees and I stepped away to help my son through his senior year in high school and get him out to college and so I took a break. And so I'm back for more.
You don't want me to comment on that? I think when I'm walking away, I'm running. Okay, um, all right, well, that's good. Um, anybody else? Joe? Counselor Hayes? Counselor Rist?
Well, let's start with, so Clay. There, I mean, like some, there's obviously some, like, some people have some controversial things. There was, I know you're, passions tend to run high, I guess is the way to put it and, you know, there were some, during that whole sign thing, there was some thing said that some people would've said were unprofessional as far as emails response to situations. I mean, do you feel that you've changed since then or maybe you regret some of those?
Oh, I've totally changed since then. Uh, just, uh, I am passionate about everything I do, I think. Um, but, uh, well, I'm not even, shouldn't even go into an explanation or a defense of myself back then, but, uh, I've definitely turned over a new leaf as far as my attitude towards life in general. So, um, yeah, I definitely don't wanna head down the path that I did before. I think I learned a lot from that and, uh...
So there are some things that I, I just think you probably would've not have done or would've handled differently, I guess.
I don't know what we're speaking of.
Well, I'm just, I know there was, that's, that's a fair point. I mean, this was, I, I talked to Andrea today and there was an email early on that she felt slightly threatened by where you kinda mentioned, "I'm gonna be watching you whatever you do" and, I mean, those were just, that seemed like a little bit over the line, so you would've --
Oh, yeah, well, I don't actually remember saying anything like that, but I definitely made my feelings public and I'm sorry, uh, the explanation is that there was, I was a sign, owned a small sign business in town and, uh, there was an incident where the City Building Inspector started enforcing an older, uh, sign ordinance that a lot of people weren't obeying the rules and I, at least, I started getting a lot of calls from, uh, I'm also on the Board of Directors at the Chamber and so I just care about small business in East Hampton and at the time I felt like the, the building inspector was coming down a little bit hard on the local business people and, uh, I made my thoughts known about that. And, uh, as the, um, situation progressed, it got more intense and I think my feelings about it got more intense as well and there was definitely points where I would, you know, what I heard frequently was that if you don't like the law, change it. And so I did what I thought was due diligence and, and frequently contacted the City Counselors by email and let them know what was going, what in my mind was going on and, uh, wanted to help my fellow business people react to what was happening. And it got pretty controversial and so...
The whole sign thing was very controversial.
Yeah, when you, when you researched that online, well, my concern is that there were more than, than a few people who contacted me when they saw that your name had gone forward, who unfortunately will not put anything in writing, but the term lightning rod keeps coming up and that, you know, there was communications from you that was, was really negative and kind of threatening and harassing, you know. Be it on social media or email, you know, there were, there were a couple of different things.
Counselor Rist?
Clay, given that you've said, you've turned over a new leaf or you feel that you have different attitude now, um, given this position, well, let me ask you this, given we have a new government, we have a new mayor, et cetera. Do you feel, at the time, I think you thought wrongly, but you thought, that, that was my opinion, that the City Council was not pro-business because we weren't following.
Yes, I did make that idea.
You made that accusation numerous times. How do you feel now about the government in general and has your opinion of how government operates changed at all? Because there's two things in there, one, it's a new government, a new mayor. Secondly, government operates in a different way. You may disagree with how I feel, but we're all looking to do what we think is right for the city. And I think that's not an attitude that I got from you. It was either, back then it was my way or the highway in a sense, so I'm wondering how you feel now, 'cause you've made that statement, it makes me feel better that you made that statement.
Well, to address the first or maybe it was the second part of your question was, um, I definitely have turned over a new leaf, my own, I, I'm at peace with the world now, I think. And, uh, I'm not interested in controversy, in fact, I'd like to avoid it like the clay. But, um, also to address the first part of your question, I think, uh, I do like the new mayor and feel like she's been very proactive in dealing with the business community and I did not feel that way about the previous mayor and that might've been the basis of my general discontent.
Well, I'm not so much generally concerned about whether or not you're happy. What I'm concerned about is representing the city and opening us up to some sort of harassment. I mean, this has been a long documented kind of behavior and I'm concerned about it. My, my other big concern is that you seem to have a long history with David Gardner. Could you explain to me that relationship?
Uh, yes, well, he was assisting the, uh, business, Building Inspector back during the sign, I call it a debacle.
That's a good word.
Can you go back to 2008? I have an article here.
Yeah, no, we remember that.
He himself was a lightning rod at the time and, uh, as I remember the last Appointments Committee meeting I went to, there was quite a number of people that showed up in opposition of him being appointed to the Planning Board. So, um, I'd say we were both were lightning rods at the time and, uh, the difference being that he was on an appointed board of the city, which was the zoning board at the time, which I felt was, uh, not the correct place for a person who's enforcing a zoning ordinance to also be on the zoning board. Uh, so that was a big complaint that came from me. Um, but, yeah, I have definitely had my issues with David in the past, but he's also on the, uh, EDIC and I recognize that and I certainly, several people who know about the history of the last five years of this, uh, city, um, uh, know a lot about that adversarial relationship.
I only knew peripheral, like I wasn't.
Well, you, you're obviously fairly well-informed at least.
I Googled it.
Thank God for Google.
Well, I guess at some extent it's old, so, but do you feel confident you would be willing to have a similar relationship with other people on the board?
Well, and one of my concerns is, is, you know, speaking to the mayor about this particular committee, she's really excited that they're bringing it up from 15 people and like I said before, 10 people, that it's actually got some good energy going on with it. She's really enthusiastic about the direction that it's going and we know we have an individual on the Board and we're considering adding another individual to the Board who have basically been oil and water for the past eight years.
I wanna speak to...
Go ahead.
Just so that you guys can conclude your meeting, 'cause it's getting late. Um, my, my point, you're...
We already did you.
Well, they told me 5:30.
No, I got an email from her that she told you 5:15 when you stopped in.
Oh, 5:30.
Anyway, uh, Clay's done a lot in, I think, I haven't, I did not agree with his position. I was very unhappy with him back then, but I think having adversarial people on Board is not a bad thing for them to stay civil, having different opinions. We have different opinions all the time, we don't go out of attitude. So I think it's a good thing to have that and I think the EDIC can have the business owners, someone like David Gardner, who's not necessarily a business owner, but has a great deal of dedication to the city's development and does Clay. They may disagree, but that's okay, because that sets up for lively debate, as long as it stays as lively debate. The other thing I'll say to you is, we'll be watching. This reappointment goes to the 16th and I'm sure if it's successful, you'll wanna do it again. But if complaints come in and we have a chance then to review it. So I'm very happy, I don't think, maybe, I'm not speaking for Counselor Hayes, but I'm not taking a chance and saying I'd vote for you to be on it. I think you're gonna do fine and I don't have a problem with the controversy that, that was in the past. I think people change, but I also feel like, you know, we have a chance to review it, so I'm not too worried about it. I think you'll be good, as long as you understand that disagreement doesn't need to be so passionate as to be uncivil. And I think that's something that can be said for a lot of people, but you have that history, which we're bringing up, so I'm just gonna tell you that that's something to have to...
Right, and that was one of the things that those two things dovetail, that there, there is a history of, of not being civil. And there was also a history of having a very animosity relationship with an individual who's already on the Board. It just, it, it looks like a little bit of, a little power.
I, I hear what you're saying, but we also, when we appointed David Gardner to this committee, or was it this committee?
Oh, I don't know.
That we, um, we kinda did it as a, as a test and we told David that and that, um, David Boyle and a lot of the other people that were in, in the attendance agreed. I mean, um, I really am a believer in, in people changing and giving them a second chance. And I think that the EDIC, because, because Clay is very passionate as far as businesses go, as long as he can keep his inner voice, inner voice in himself and we, you know, you know, we don't become over-passionate and we keep the discussions in a civil manner, just like we do all the other committees that we serve on. Um, and again, I'm...
I'm just very concerned about scuttling something that the mayor is really enthusiastic about now. about now, and it's going in a very positive direction.
Yeah, and along with that, and...
Dangerous.
The mayor put forth his appointment. We have to keep that in mind.
But the mayor also clearly stated that it is entirely up to us.
Well, of course, it's always up to us, because we are the appointing, but she wouldn't have put an appointment in front of us unless she felt that it was going to be okay either.
Well, she has to look at the appointment.
That's right. That's right, so...
We're going to bring that up as quickly.
Well, this is the other thing. Google, you had some really strong feelings about videotaping meetings. How do you feel about them now?
Actually, I don't mind certain meetings. I think everything should be transparent. I objected to videos being made of little old ladies on the art, on the conservation committee. At the time, I saw the whole video part of this, of, you know, interacting in the city building, was actually kind of, that was a David Gardner issue that he pushed forward. And at the time, he was videotaping people in meetings and displaying the video on his own personal website and making commentary about it. So I didn't see that as being very proper either. So I mean, I guess I didn't really expect to be defending myself the way I am tonight.
All of the meetings are videotaped, and that's per city council.
Right.
This is being videotaped.
You had said that unmanned video cameras destroy the creativity volunteers because they think that any scrutiny, carefully scrutinized comment they make could result in public ridicule and/or government investigation. This will most certainly result in a lack of volunteers when we meet them.
Yeah, I actually don't disagree with that still. I just, I personally, I volunteered to be on an ad hoc committee to review the sign ordinance, and also was on the highway business committee for a while, and all of us, several of us received letters from the Massachusetts Ethics Commission, because we were reported to the Ethics Commission simply because we were local businessmen participating on this ad hoc committee, which has no power, only the power to make suggestions.
Right, but the Ethics Commission is very black and white about what is okay and what isn't okay. It's pretty, it's pretty standard.
Yeah, and I mean, I'm not worried about that.
They didn't make a ruling. They just, somebody made a claim, doesn't mean they didn't rule it.
That's right.
No, but I was investigated simply because, I mean, I got this threatening letter from the government that said I could be fined $2,000 for every meeting that I participated in. Well, that scared me a little bit.
Are you willing to accept that level of risk moving forward?
Yeah, well, I don't really think that, now that I've learned a little bit more about the law, I'm not really, at the time, I would have recognized that, well, this is basically meaningless, but you still have to call the Ethics Commission and explain yourself, which is somewhat embarrassing. And so, yeah.
Many people, the minute it complains to me, they have to investigate. Okay, so I think that we've asked enough questions. Clay, thank you for your, your patience to follow us. And I'm going to move this to a vote. So I'll make the motion that we appoint Clay Crowe to Development and Industrial Committee for a term of expiration of December 31st, 2016.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Come on, come on, let's...
I'm sorry, discussion.
No, 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 it's just quickly, because we've had a lot of comments, is that, you know, just as we did with David, I think, you know, people who have, or lightning rods have controversy, doesn't mean they can't be, and we welcome their participation. And I think it works out perfectly that your, your first appointment's like a year and a half. So I think it would be great, because just like with David, it's a opportunity to participate, but, you know, I just have to make sure everyone gets along fine, and I think is a perfect length of time for it. So I'd be happy to support your appointment.
As I will too. So all in favor? Aye. Against? Okay. Thank you. And then we have Carol Abby Smith. Carol's not here. She did send a letter with her resume. She's interested in joining the EDIC, lived in East Hampton for 12 years, currently serving on the ECA Plus Board and the City Space Board, as well as previously on the ECC Board for six years. She's currently a full-time agent and part-owner of the Lap World Estate in North Hampton, and has an interest in seeing that East Hampton continues to grow and prosper. She will also be reporting back to ECA Plus on the meetings of the EDIC, which is, I think, is a, is a nice little connection. So she faces her consideration. So she was invited to come here tonight. She did say that she was going to try to make it, but, but she was coming back from a meeting, so she may not. So with that going forward, I...
Make a motion for Carol Abby Smith to Development Industrial Commission.
I will second the motion. Any discussion?
Nope.
No, I, I think she's going, I think she'll be a good fit, and along with the other two appointments to the EDIC, and I look forward to seeing that whole group move forward and come back to us with lots of great ideas and momentum and just keep moving ahead. So, okay, all in favor? Aye. Against? So, all right. So...
I apologize for confusion.
Okay. I know that I had done an email from, Barbara was not in the office, Mary Ann was in the office, and she emailed me and said that you were in, and that the meeting was set for 5:00, and I said, "Well, okay, so you told them 5:00, 5:00, 5:15 show?" Yeah, yeah, I told them that, and I said, "Okay, then we're good."
Okay, I, I'm trying to speak confusion, because I remember being in the office, and she said the name, you know, they have a lot of business, so generally they see people around 5:30, so that's what I connected. I, she never sent me an email or anything. She, I mean, the only reason I snapped in was official license thing. It wasn't about this appointment, and she said, "The committee wants to see you."
Yeah, because I didn't have your email in the thing, so I would have emailed you personally.
So I'm sorry for that.
Yeah, that's, that's okay. But Dennis, the, the way the vote went tonight was that we voted 2-2-0, we're missing a board member to not make the appointment for you to the Board of Health. And, and the reasoning behind that was we felt that maybe you were too close being our retired health agent and then coming onto the board, that it might make things a little uncomfortable for the new health agent, and that may or may not be true, but that's kind of how we...
The only reason I was asked to get on board, and I decided to put my name forward, is the city spent a lot of money on me in 14 years, and I have a lot of knowledge and a lot that I could bring to the table to help the board. I've known Jackie a long time, and having been in that seat, I certainly, Jackie needs to do her job and needs to not have the interference from me. I experienced that. I know what that's like to have someone who's interfering in you trying to do your job. So that would be the last thing I could do.
No, I'm sorry, Dennis, I, I had city council starting, but I, just to say that this was a subcommittee vote, we will take another vote at city council. You're more than welcome.
Yeah, no, we would, we would absolutely have you come up there.
The mayor and I talked at length about this, so she felt pretty comfortable.
Yeah, no, Dennis, I would love, love to have you come upstairs to the city council and...
Well, what time is the conference?
Now. Just walk upstairs.
Okay.
Huh?
I gotta get my wallet.
Oh, yeah, you don't want anybody stealing your wallet. Oh, that's terrible.
You're done, sorry. How are you feeling, Clay?
Good.
Oh, good.
We're out of heat.
Good.
That's a great thing.
Yeah.
That's amazing.
Yes, good.
Great.
See you in an hour.